For the record, we have stated for the, read into the record, the statement on the closed meeting of Monday, September 8th, 2025. We have approved the agenda as circulated minus an update on the arboretum committee, and we have approved the consent agenda of four items. We are now moving to presentations by residents, beginning with a special invitation for comments on the county ban on gas-powered leaf blowers and alternatives. To that end, the town has circulated a brief background paper indicating that the council has already considered and rejected two of four alternatives, namely drafting our own ordinance or opting into the entirety of the county noise control ordinance. We are looking, pragmatically speaking, we are looking at doing nothing, maintaining the status quo, which because the town has opted out of the general county noise control ordinance means that operation of gas-powered leaf blowers would remain legal in Garrett Park, or opting into just that portion of the county noise control ordinance that pertains to gas-powered leaf blowers. The background, I will not try to go into in detail, but the town, by virtue of some arcane statutory provisions, is opted out of any county ordinance unless it specifically and affirmatively opts in. There are some exceptions where municipalities do not have an option such as the health code. Although the background for a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers is overwhelmingly based on health issues, it was nonetheless enacted under the noise ordinance. So the town is automatically opted out unless we affirmatively opt in. That's the framework of the discussion we're having this evening. And I believe that the general subject has been subject to some robust discussion on the listservs, so I would just repeat my suggestion, not a requirement, that you offer non-cumulative observations on this. So let's start. Who would like to go first? Yes?
I did decide to opt in when this county rule went into effect.
I'm sorry. What was the question?
She really should go to the microphone. She really should go to the microphone, I think.
Yeah. Why don't we, and just to enlarge on my remarks earlier, this, the presentations for residents are an opportunity for you to be heard. It's not an open discussion or question and answer. That will come up, the opportunity for that will come up when the council determines what action it might wish to take. At this point, we're just interested in your viewpoints. Now, I'm sorry.
Well, I did have a question, and it's part of the background. Was this issue discussed when the county implemented its rule about the leaf blowers? Was it considered by the town council that we would actually opt in at that point in time?
The show audience was, I don't know, I wasn't here.
I could give a quick update, Chris. I could give a quick update if that's allowed. The town council did have at least one discussion about it, and at that time, our understanding was that legally we could only adopt it fully, including the whole noise ordinance that the county has, or not at all, or create our own. And at that time, we deferred action because there was a fair amount of discussion that people, that the council members and also some public had weighed in that they were uncomfortable with the full noise ordinance adoption by Garrett Park. It was only a few months later that we did learn that legally we did have other options, and that has led us to this point of seeking community input.
Thank you. I just didn't understand the background. My name's Kathy Benjamin, and I don't have too much to say other than what was in my email this morning. I just want to say that I think it's really, really important from a human standpoint, but also just our ethical responsibility to the environment. And leaf blowers actually caused a lot of damage, other than just the pollution and the noise. They blow up lots of toxins and things like that in the dust, and it's a health issue both for the people who are doing the work, as well as everyone else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a presentation with respect to the county leaf blower ban? Charlie, would you step to the microphone?
I'm not very clear to explain that speech, public speaking. My name is Charles Steiner. My wife and I, Carol, have lived in Garrett Park for 40 years at 10910 Montrose Avenue. I totally support the ban on gas-powered leaf blowers and, in fact, other gas-powered landscaping equipment. The ban is a no-brainer. Not only are the blowers noisy, but they also befoul the air with noxious and unhealthy fumes and increase the use of fossil fuels that are destroying our planet and sickening and killing human beings. In our regular daily walks around town, Carol and I often come across workmen using the gas-powered machines, and we have to inhale the thick, noxious fumes for sometimes an entire town block. We wonder what it is doing to our health and the health of our neighbors and the kids who are home during the day. The noise from the machines is sometimes so offensive that we call the autumn the noisy season. The cost of the transition is negligible when compared to what the town spends on some of the town hall, and landscapers already have to comply with county regulations banning gas-powered blowers. Garrett Park is well-known for exempting itself from the county ordinances in the past, reflecting its historic independent streak. I've supported that in the past, but times change, and we must adapt as good world citizens, especially considering our town's progressive history marked by its pioneering as one of the nation's first nuclear tree zone, its creation of an arboretum, its protective protection of its ample parklands, and securing perhaps the nation's first listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Thank you, and I hope you act quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, did you want to go next?
Should I wait till all the leave comments are made?
Oh, yes, please. Please. Leaf blowers.
Hi, everybody. This is Jean. Oh, I'll wait till whoever's there talks.
Hello. Good evening, board members. My name is Michael For, and everyone, I'm a resident of Garrett Park. To keep it simple, I'm thinking of two constituencies, those homeowners that have high volume of leaves, like myself. We do need either air-powered or gas, or electric or gas, and I find the battery power goes dead quite quickly, so we have to rely on our gas. And the other constituency is the men that keep our city clean, the three workers that we see shoveling snow and cleaning the streets, Frank, Gio, and George. Imagine them having to use batteries all day long to clean the streets. So I think, talk to them, see what they want. I think that should be in your thoughts as well. So if we're pro-worker, we should think of George, Gio, and Frank. What's going to make their lives easier? So those homeowners that we have high volumes. And my last idea is, if we are going to ban it, could we possibly have three months where we're allowed to use gas-powered? October, November, December, where we have the high volume of leaves, it could help the homeowners and help the workers that work for the city to keep our town clean. So that's my idea, if you can consider maybe just allowing gas-powered blowers the month of October, November, and December. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here on leaves? Barry?
Hi. Can you hear me, Chris? Oh, okay.
Hold one sec, make sure our recording is working.
Chris, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I can wait for the gentleman who's standing there if you'd like.
I didn't hear that.
She was going to wait.
Oh, okay.
I'm Barry Rosloff, Roosevelt Avenue. First of all, small comment about the workers. I'm very concerned about the three guys who do the work here, plus all the crews that come, that they have to use this, that they are using this gas equipment, which is quite harmful to their health, and all the fumes that they have to breathe in, and the noise that they're subject to. So hopefully going to electric would alleviate some of that. The other thing is that I heard something, read something about 20% decrease in the time it takes for you to, in the background material that was sent out, that it takes 20% longer to use the electric equipment, and hopefully that could just, if that's true, because if you look online, there's, well, it's all over the place about the relative costs of the two systems, but if it does point out taking longer, hopefully that's just weighed into the cost-benefit analysis of the whole thing, of the whole issue. If it takes 20% longer, you'll have to hire 20% more people or something, or another person, or take longer time to do it, and that's an increased cost, but hopefully that's factored into the overall costs of the two mandates. And again, I looked online to see which is cost more, and it's all over, you know, one of it has bigger start cost, one of it has bigger maintenance cost, and then of course there's the cost of going to the doctor if you get, your lungs get messed up, and of course the more abstract cost to society, the lower probability to be in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
Thank you.
Hey there.
Start by stating your name and address for the record, please.
Yep. Hi, Jean Haran, 4419 Cambria Avenue. I know that Phil just joined the call, and he can continue at some point with what I'm going to say, but, you know, I liked Donna Caligian's suggestion, and now the gentleman too before on, you know, allowing the leaf blowing in the fall. I think that's nice. One of the things that we've come up against in discussing a noise ordinance, just living as neighbors around the pool, is that, you know, there may be some unintended consequences of opting in to the county's noise ordinance. We've had a situation where neighbors have complained to us about another neighbor having a party, and maybe the music being too loud. And, you know, one of the things that we've had a conversation about is that, you know, when you bring in an ordinance like noise, it kind of leaves all of us neighbors open to being told to shut something down. And in this case, it was a party that was happening during the day, and I know Phil and I talked with another neighbor, and we said, you know, imagine you're having a graduation party, you know, how would you feel if the county came and, you know, shut your party down? Maybe it's better to deal neighbor, you know, neighbor and neighbor have a conversation. So I would urge that the council really look at all of the aspects of that noise ordinance to make sure we are not, you know, making such a finite decision here, just looking at the noise. Now, the other thing I heard was, let's get rid of mowers. And what I want to say about that is, I do think that there is an opportunity to set a limit on the time people can blow and the time people can mow their lawns. We have a neighbor who mows lawns after 9:00 p.m., and, you know, to us, that's late. So, you know, in addition to maybe offering some kind of fall exemption for leaf blowing, perhaps we could think about, you know, working on a time of evening on the mowing and the blowing. And I'll let Phil share anything else. I don't know that I've expressed that well, Phil.
No, that's fine. I'm, as a member of the council, I'm probably not able to speak at this point. As you can probably tell, I'm hardly able to speak to begin with. So I do agree that there's a lot of unintended consequences, and I'll be happy to bring that up at the appropriate time, but thanks, Jean, for teeing that up.
Thank you, Jean, and Phil.
All right. As noted earlier, this is not an educational session, but I will repeat that the council has already determined not to opt into the entirety of the county noise ordinance. So this is just looking, and the town has the legal ability to opt into individual sections of that omnibus law. So what's before us now is whether or not to opt into simply the gas-powered leaf blower ban. I would also point out that an exemption for the months of October, November, and December was introduced at the county council and defeated.
Hi, I'm Barry Lydon. I live at 4605 Waverly. I am opposed to, well, actually, I'm supportive of the ban, as I've sent into the county or into the city, my comments, so I won't repeat all of them, but I do want to point out that, you know, when we're trying to consider various public policies, there's a lot of different priorities we have to consider, and I think we've got four or five in front of us. I would rank some of them more important than others. It's not to say that there aren't some concerns that have been raised that are totally valid, but there are some that I believe are more important. For example, the environmental impact of operating a gas blow, of gas leaf blower is enormous. It's absolutely ridiculous how much carbon emissions come out of all this thing. You would have to drive 3,990 miles in an Ford F-150 to equate the same amount of emissions from 30 minutes of use of one of these gas blowers. The health impact, not just to the community, but particularly to the workers, people who use these gas blowers are directly inhaling toxic and carcinogens and carcinogens. The cost to our residents, there are a ton of documents out there and economic analyses that are available that can demonstrate how it is that over time, the actual cost of operating electric blowers is actually less than operating gas blowers, when you take into consideration the cost of fuel and maintenance of the equipment. The cost to the town, the larger operators who have to remove large amounts of leaves can be slightly different. However, those costs can and often are passed along to the users. For example, my landscaper that I employ, I contacted him two years ago back when the county passed this ordinance, and asked him what he was going to be doing, and he had been already complying with the law in chit and chase, and had found that one of the ways, the way that he was going to pass all his costs to his customers. So my wife and I have been paying more money as a result of that, and that's just the cost of doing business. If we, as a town, provide a safe harbor for gas-powered emissions, we're going to undermine all the efforts that everyone else is doing to try to clean up the environment, which does not sound like the tradition of Garrett Park. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the research you circulated on the listserv. Next.
Hi, I'm Ira Abrams. I live on Mammoth Street, and I just wanted to say I have an electric lawnmower and electric leaf blower. It's powerful enough, I can push anything, and as long as you charge it up the night before, works great. Thanks.
Thank you. Was that on behalf of Lisa, or yourself, or all of the above? Was that on behalf of you, or Lisa, or all of the above? Okay. Is there anyone else? Yes, on the leaf blowers, correct? Yep.
Lucy Rosloff. I live on Brokaw Avenue. Just wanted to comment about the idea of having a ban that is not for the three months of the fall. I mean, 5% of the leaf blowing that gets done, gets done during those three months, and that seems to me to just sort of be overriding the entire idea of getting this, of putting this ordinance through.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to address, yes, on the leaf blowers? Yep. Name and address.
Frank Monck, 10808 Castle Creek Street. Hi, Gary. Mayor, members of the council, fellow residents, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. While my position likely won't earn me any new friends, I want you to know that I understand that many of you support a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. I respect the environmental health concerns driving that position. However, I think this ban deals primarily with a noise ordinance, and to address health and environmental concerns goes beyond the language of the ban, in my opinion. I argue that when it comes to pollution, while folks may be under the impression that gasoline is the source of all evils, I ask you to consider that most of Maryland's electricity is primarily generated by the burning of fossil fuels. I urge you to consider the broader impact such a ban would have on our community, especially on small landscaping businesses, working-class residents, and citizens who deserve to enjoy their personal property without government overreach. I'm advocating for a balanced, practical approach to our community's landscaping needs and our right to self-government. Gas-powered leaf blowers have long been a reliable tool for homeowners. They offer unmatched power and efficiency, especially for larger properties and heavy-duty cleanup tasks that battery-powered alternatives simply cannot handle yet. If you haven't noticed, Garrett Park's made out of trees. How I manage my lawn, my private property, the cornerstone of American freedom, should be my business. I don't want to compost. I don't want to leave them. I want a lawn free of leaves. I want it done quickly, and I want it done without having to reinvest in additional equipment in fear of what I already own. You're asking me to sacrifice my personal freedom and my enjoyment of my property because fundamentally it makes loud noise sometimes. On the matter of noise, how different is a leaf blower to a hedge trimmer, a weed whacker, a lawnmower, a cacophony of barking dogs? How about a series of large freight trains passing through the town all day and night? I think we should carefully evaluate our complaints over noise about leaf blowers when we have to contend with the whistles of locomotives at 3:00 a.m. The biggest thing that brings me here today is the notion of prickliness of Garrett Park. For a personal privilege, may I have a few additional minutes to put my thoughts? Thank you.
Make it brief, please.
It's something to be set aside to sign onto a regulation from a regulation-heavy county, one that is currently in the throes of splitting up our town, our children, to send to different schools. I think it was Lenin who said, "Show me the man, and I'll show you the crime." We're being regulated to death, and with so many real problems in our community, school and road overcrowding, the lack of affordable housing, the NIMBY attitudes of the long-tenured residents, to those new to discover the charms of Garrett Park, I think it's a shame that we want to give up what makes us special. Regulations, while often well-intentioned, can unintentionally stifle the very spirit that makes communities thrive: flexibility, innovation, and neighborly cooperation. When we add layers of rules, we risk turning everyday decisions into bureaucratic hurdles. Small businesses, homeowners, lower-income residents often bear the brunt of these changes. They face the increased costs, the paperwork, and limitations that make it harder to serve the community or pursue creative solutions. Local communities flourish when trust and personal responsibility are prioritized over top-down mandates, and I'll add neighbor mandates. We know our neighbors, we understand our unique challenges, and we're capable of solving problems through dialogue, not directives. Adding regulation can erode that trust and shift power away from the people who live here. Instead of more rules, let's invest in education, incentives, and collaboration. Let's empower residents to make informed choices rather than enforce compliance. A resilient community is not built on restrictions, it's built on respect, freedom, and shared values. I use a leaf blower, and I know my neighbors are out enjoying their yards or having company, I find other things to do with my time. That's a basic level of respect, in the spirit of being part of the community in which I live. But when people try to tell me that I'm not adult enough, responsible enough, or smart enough to decide for myself what's best for me and mine, that's not something that gets me on your side. Let's not rush into a ban that will hurt the very people, each other, who keep our town clean and beautiful. Why do we insist on making others live the way we think is best for them? Let's work together for a solution that's fair, effective, and doesn't remove freedoms from our residents to choose how they invest in their own well-being. I know mine has always improved when I use gas-powered leaf blowers on my lawn, and for that, I'm advocating for the council not to sign onto the county's ban. Keep this attitude. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other residents who wish to address the town opting into that portion of the county noise ordinance regulating gas-powered leaf blowers? All right, we will close that portion of presentations from residents. The remainder of our time is open to any resident to address any issue before the council. Let's start with Liz King.
I'm Liz King. I'm on Argyle Avenue, and I have two brief points to make to you this evening. These are points for consideration in the event that the town should decide to send a letter to the Board of Ed on the redistricting that accompanies the reopening of Woodward High School. Main point is, we have asked before, and the cluster has asked before, that all WJ students go to Walter Johnson or Woodward. Please thank the Board of Ed for four proposals that do exactly that, and please stress the continued importance of that. The second point is that our schools will need room to grow. WJ and Woodward will continue to get hundreds more students from development, and also other growth on top of that. The total utilization numbers for the two schools together show much more room to grow in options A, B, and C than option D. I thank you for your consideration. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other presentations? Yes?
Still Ira Abrams, and still live on Lea Street. I wrote this proposal that the town get biodegradable bags that go into the dog stations, as well place an additional station on the corner of Oxford and Chesapeake Street, which is closer to where I live, and I got signatures, and Lisa suggested I get signatures from neighbors, and I have eight neighbors, I could have gotten more, I stopped at that point, who agree with the idea. So I'm just asked for that to be done.
Thank you. It's not the first time that biodegradable bags have arisen. We are assured by our supplier that the bags that we currently use are biodegradable. We can revisit that if you like, or look behind that assurance, but that's what we've been told. Anything further? At this point, you can talk about anything you like, so long as it's reasonably germane to the town of Garrett Park. So long as it's reasonably germane to the town of Garrett Park.
Hello, this is Amy Dinkley. I hope you've been through. And I'm here to talk about the boundary study. So for anyone who's not familiar, the boundary study, there's a new high school called Woodward. We're kind of located between Walter Johnson and Woodward. And so MCVS has developed these options for the boundary study. This is our second round of options. And one option splits the town of Garrett Park as Draftmore Avenue. That would have the kids on the north side of town going to one school, Woodward, and the kids on the other side of town going to Walter Johnson. Because our town is small and our density of children is low. That's one to five children going to a separate school than the rest of the Garrett Park and Garrett Park Estates community.
You can ignore that.
Okay. Um, so we would like to ask for the town council and the mayor's assistance in advocating for our town, both our town unification, but also unification with the communities of Garrett Park Estates and White Flint Park, which are in our pool, and we do community events with them, and we have list serves with them. Even our town, I've looked at the census numbers, our town only has 10 children each year. So we would really benefit from having extra children if we're going to be pulled away from everyone we went to middle school with to go to a different high school, which is what's going to happen the way this split articulation is being offered if we go to Walter Johnson. Um, so I would like to request that the town council and mayor submit a letter to the Board of Education and help us connect with Julie Yang. Uh, I believe she is running now for county council, and we're having a little over time to reach her. But we'd like to advocate to her, and we also would like to see what else can be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, this will also be taken up later on the agenda, but for those who don't want to hang around. I don't wish to prejudge any decision that the council might make, but I've made a preliminary decision that we will, because there is a deadline this week of signing up to give testimony before the Board of Education, that the town of Garrett Park, the corporate municipality, will sign up for a slot th- this Thursday, the deadline for the Board of Education hearing, at which point we will offer testimony and probably offer a longer or more detailed written submission as well. That, that part will be discussed in greater detail this evening. But several of us participated in the meeting that was held last night by the Citizens Association, for which we are very grateful for their sponsorship. And, uh, without picking out any individuals, Nikki has put in an awful lot of work generating, um, materials that make the issues, um, clearer for any of us to understand. So we will be doing at least that much. Are there any other resident presentations on any issues? Yeah, just come up to the.
Good evening, members of the town council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jennifer Wong. I'm here on behalf of the Garrett Park Estates Community Association. I would like to express our appreciation to the Garrett Park Citizens Association for beginning engagement with our community last night as we begin working on this high school boundary study process. And I welcome a conversation with town council tonight. Like so many families in the, in the town, the estate shares a strong commitment to preserving the sense of community that makes this whole neighborhood so special. As you know, the proposed boundary changes can divide Garrett Park and Garrett Park Estates between different high schools. We believe that that would fragment the relationships, volunteer efforts, and shared identity that we've built together. Our children grow up playing on the same teams, swimming on the swim team together, playing at the same parks, going to the same neighborhood events, and learning side by side in school. In many ways, we are one community in how we volunteer, create and participate in social events together and support our schools together. We've spoken with many neighbors within the estates, and we want to be clear. The residents of the estates are eager to advocate in partnership with the broader Garrett Park community. When our interests align in an effort to keep our community, Garrett Park Town, Garrett Park Estates, and White Flint Park together, represented by a single high school, preserving the continuity and connections that define who we are. We are committed to working collaboratively with the town council, with our neighbors in Garrett Park proper, and with MCVS to make our voices heard respectfully and constructively. Together, we can show the Board of Education that keeping Garrett Park and Garrett Park Estates united is not only the most logical boundary decision, but also the one that best supports students' well-being and community cohesion. We plan to advocate for option B, as this is the only option that keeps our community united, and would like your partnership and support to do so. We hope the council will continue to represent the shared position in its communications with the Board of Education, and we stand ready to work together in any way we can, whether through joint statements, letters, or coordinated outreach. Thank you for your time, your advocacy, and any continued partnership in keeping the Garrett Park community together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other presentations by residents? Very well. Thank you for your time. I hope I didn't appear too heavy handed, but I've kept these poor people here until nearly midnight for the two previous months, and we turn into pumpkins if we stay too late. So I appreciate your tolerance of my trying to keep things on an even keel here. Um, the next item on the agenda are action items, the first of which is adoption of ordinance number 2025 dash seven, amending the street code concerning rights of way, uh, right of way treatment, protection, and maintenance. Barb, would you give us some background, please?
Sure. Um, second. I apologize. My papers are a little bit out of order at the moment. I mean, you all have had a series of discussions during this calendar year about a proposed ordinance that would amend the street code concerning the protection and maintenance of trees and shrubs in the right of way and on town owned property. Uh, by way of reference, the street code includes section 701 through 719 of the town code. At your meeting in September, you introduced ordinance number 2025 dash seven, and the ordinance is before you this evening for possible adoption. Um, if enacted, um, ordinance number 2025 dash seven would increase the fine for a violation of section 716 of the town code, which was recommended by the Arboretum Committee, I believe it was back in 2024. Um, currently, any violation of a provision in chapter seven of the town code is punishable by a fine of $100. The Arboretum Committee's recommendation to increase the fine to $1,000 was brought to the attention of the mayor and town council back in December of 2024 during a broader discussion of the fines and penalties throughout the town code. And at that time, the mayor and town council had no objection to raising the proposed fine amount as recommended by the Arboretum Committee. Um, so this evening, this is before you for adoption. Obviously, it's at your discretion whether you choose to go ahead and move forward with adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you. To get this on the table for, uh, consideration, I will entertain a motion to adopt uh, ordinance number 2025 dash seven, amending the street code concerning right of way treatment and maintenance.
I move to adopt this ordinance.
Oh, right. And is there a second? Very good. Any discussion from members of the council? John, can you hear it?
We can hear you. I can hear you perfectly. Sorry. Yes.
And, and.
No objection.
All right, good. Um, well, if we have no discussion from the council, is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to address the adoption of this ordinance? Very well, I will call for a vote. All in favor of adoption of ordinance number 2025 dash seven, amending the street code, signify by saying aye.
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 Otherwise minded? Very good. That passes.
I was going to say aye, just so you got me on record.
Hate to put you to the, even, even that.
Above and beyond the call of duty, Phil.
Take care of yourself. If I could just ask for a two minute sidebar for a moment. Ah, thank you. Procedural niceties. Um, the next order of business is also adoption of a previously introduced matter, resolution number 2025 dash three, adopting a fee and bond schedule. Barb, would you again like to give us a little background?
Sure. So back in June, the town council adopted ordinance number 2025 dash five, which modified chapter four of the town code, which is entitled Building Housing and Business Regulations. Um, the goal of that ordinance was to add contemporary provisions and address procedural gaps that existed in chapter four, excuse me. Among the, um, changes that that ordinance made is that it required a permit application to be accompanied by a performance bond or other surety in an amount that would be established by resolution adopted by the town council. And the performance bond or surety is to ensure that the public right of way is restored to its pre-construction condition after whatever the work that is the subject of that permit has been completed. Um, you discussed this matter, um, on both August 11th and September 8th. In light of some of the discussions that happened, um, most recently at the meeting, the resolution that is before you this evening, um, is, um, different than that that was before you in August and September, specifically, this proposed resolution addresses only permit application fees and the required bond or surety for right of way restoration, as the mayor and town council know. You also had, um, some consideration of a bond or surety that would be separate pertaining to town trees that would be included in any approved tree protection plan for a specific application. Um, several members of the council had expressed a desire to think about that issue a little bit more, not because they were not supportive of protecting town trees, but I think just the, um, the amounts of the proposed amounts, as well as some other, um, questions that had arisen. Um, so the resolution that's before you this evening deals only with the right of way restoration bond. Um, the categories that would be impacted are those that mirror what is, um, the Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services charges for. So that would be, um, per town of Garrett Park permits, accessory buildings, um, a building addition, demolition applications, driveways, uh, construction of a new residence, and construction of a swimming pool. So there are a number of town permit categories that the right of way restoration bond would not apply to. Um, the Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services, um, has a bond calculator that you can find online. Uh, basically, we took our town permit applications, sort of slotted it with the assistance of our civil engineer, um, into the county permit categories. And that's how the proposed amounts in this resolution were determined. Um, I would note that the county's minimum bond for restoration of the right of way is $1,000. Um, as we talked about at your meeting in September, forfeiture of a bond is typically governed by the terms of a bond contract. Um, as you requested, I'm at your last meeting, attachment two in your agenda packet includes the proposed language drafted by the town attorney, for any posting of a cash performance bond for right of way restoration. And so that's the overview of the issue. If there is any questions you all have, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, to tee this up for discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2025 dash three.
I'll second it.
Second, thank you. Um, any questions for Barb or discussions from the council?
When you do tackle the trees, does that get, how does that get treated if this were passed?
What I would envision is probably you would adopt a new fee and bond resolution that would have those components added to it. So that way, there's one, one resolution that includes everything, because we do post this on the website.
Barb, um, just for clarification, since plantings are included as part of the definition of right of way restoration, can you just elaborate on the distinction between what is currently before us and what we would be adding for the, for the tree restoration?
So when we looked at the county right of way restoration, um, bond calculator, they do have a item that basically refers to the planting of trees. And talking to our civil engineering firm, um, who does a lot of work, both for MCVS, um, as well as Montgomery Park, so they work a lot with the county bond calculator. Those numbers are very small. They're a couple hundred dollars, because basically the county is charging to ensure that for new, for new development, for example, that if they're required to plant 20 trees, they plant 20 trees. So there was some discussion about whether or not that element was sufficient. And I would just note that the largest, um, surety amount that is in the resolution before you is $3,300, and the lowest is $1,000. So there, there are some, a framework that the town needs to approach any tree protection bond within. Um, so I think in answer to your question, Councilmember Deutsch, I think what you end up doing is somewhat up to you all. Um, there has been a proposal on the table. Um, there's been a desire to discuss that in more detail. Um, so I think certainly we'll be looking for some direction from you all at a future date in terms of what we can do as a staff to help move that forward.
Another question I had, Barb, was whether we had received any public input to the town office that didn't hit the list serve about this, um, versions of this resolution that have been published.
No, we have not received any comments. Thank you.
Anything further from the council, including those participating virtually?
Nope.
Very well. Um, any comment or discussion from, uh, residents in the audience on the fee and bond schedule resolution? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of adopting the resolution? Signify by saying aye. Okay.
Could I just ask?
Yes, we'll, we'll stop that for a moment.
Another opportunity for comment. Um, I just want to make clear from a procedural standpoint that we don't have to, in voting at this point, decide when and if we will reconsider a tree protection bond schedule, correct? So this vote has nothing to do with that. It's not saying we won't.
No.
Okay.
This stands on its own.
This stands on its own, and then we can pick up the other action after this vote.
Correct.
If desired.
Does not, does not commit us to do anything with respect to trees? By its terms?
Right. And it does not mean that we're rejecting the tree protection.
Correct.
I want to make that part really clear.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Good. So, uh, again, with respect to adoption, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Mayor Keller, before we move on, can I just confirm that the following council members voted aye? Councilmember Deutsch? Councilmember Deutsch, Councilmember Bennett, Councilmember Stroud, Councilmember Schulp. There were four ayes votes, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. The next item, which we've not had before us before, so Barb, I hope you will give us the background on an authorization for contract for mitigation and restoration work associated with water damage at the Penn Place building.
Certainly. So recently, water leaked from the bar area of Black Market Bistro. Basically, our maintenance team was called in because the water had gone down to the post office, which is immediately below it. Fairly significant amount of water. And that has led to mold in multiple areas of the post office ceiling. So to get a clearer picture of what we were dealing with, there's obviously different types of mold. There's other types of, you know, fungal damage. We retained Sussex Environmental Consultants, which is an industrial hygiene firm, to conduct a limited moisture and mold evaluation at the building. They not only looked at the first and second floor, but also looked at the third floor. So what they were retained to do is to do a visual observation of affected areas for the presence, evidence of water damage, water stains, excuse me, and any kind of suspected fungal growth. They also did a number of moisture readings throughout the building, and also used a thermal imaging camera, and then issued a report to us. We then took their report, shared it with three different remediation and mitigation companies that do this type of work, hoping to obtain price quotations from all three. Of the three companies, one initially seemed interested, but never came out and did a site visit. The other two did conduct a site visit and submitted proposals. Those two companies were Royal Plus and Servpro. As you likely noted in reviewing your agenda packet, Royal Plus submitted its proposal in two parts. One was for the mold mitigation remediation work, and a second was for repair work. Their proposal is included in your agenda packet as attachment one. Combined, their estimated price quotation, and I want to stress estimated price quotation, is $18,247.92. And the reason I say that it is estimated, which both of these price quotations are, and that's understandable, they can only bid on what they're actually able to see. And this work will include pulling down the ductwork in the ceiling, and it is not only possible, but in our maintenance supervisor's opinion, very likely that they will find more when they pull the ceiling down. Included in your proposal as attachment, I'm sorry?
Meaning, water has been leaking?
Or there's more mold? Correct, right. They can see the ductwork. We did not have them go down and take, like, basically pull down the entire ceiling, pull out all the ductwork. It's likely that there's things that they can't see. Unfortunately. So as we included in your agenda packet, a proposal from Servpro, and as I indicated at the time we wrote this agenda item, that came, you know, all the proposals were coming in very close to the deadline of your agenda packet. When we got a closer look after the agenda packet went out at looking at Servpro's proposal, what we realized is they only included a proposal for mitigation. They did not include any repair work. Kayla has been in touch with them. We were hopeful to get that for you by this evening, but that has not arrived. So at this juncture, we have one proposal for your consideration, which is from Royal Plus. I will note that Royal Plus was recommended by Sussex Environmental and also the local government insurance trust, to which we belong, and that's who we're insured by. Royal Plus did some work out in Western Maryland. You may recall recently that there was significant flooding out in Western Maryland within the last six months, I think it was. And they were the contractor that worked for one of the municipalities out there, who was very pleased with their work. Thankfully, we don't have cascades of mud in all our buildings, as they did. I did want to note that, obviously, this was unforeseen. There is no funding in the budget for this work. We have limited coverage for mold-related property damage through our own insurance policy. The total amount of insurance at the time this loss occurred is $15,000. Obviously, the damage was emanated from the restaurant. So we will be pursuing reimbursement through either insurance subrogation, depending on the restaurant's degree of coverage, because this is a very specific writer on insurance policies, and/or direct recovery from the restaurant if they do not have sufficient coverage.
Barb, may I have a question about that? Is that likely to be additive, then? In other words, would you, would the primary coverage be the towns or the restaurants? And then could the other pick up the remainder?
We had a lot of discussion about this, because initially, our thought was to have the restaurant contact its insurance carrier, and I do have their contact information, and obviously, we have a certificate of insurance, because they are a tenant of ours. That process was moving a little slower than we would like. We had some discussion with the local government insurance trust about the best way to proceed. They recommended that basically we go ahead and get the damage addressed, particularly, you know, given that there's mold in the space. And then basically go through insurance subrogation, to the extent that the restaurant has coverage. It also means that the town is controlling the scope of work and that... It does not. I have provided the local government insurance trust with both a copy of the certificate of insurance that we have for the restaurant. I will say that from my layman's perspective, there appears to be conflicting information, whether they have the necessary writer that covers this. There are obviously provisions in our lease documents that address damage caused by the restaurant. And I've also put our our commercial real estate attorney on notice that this has occurred. What? That's one thing I did want to mention to you. I'm glad you mentioned that, because we've been keeping a very close eye on one area in particular in the ceiling, where the tile is still there. When we initially walked through the space with Black Restaurants Group Director of Operations, so there are a series of small refrigerators in the bar area, and there's also a very large ice maker. One of the refrigerators did not appear to be closing all the way. You could kind of see light even when it was shut. And these are kind of smaller refrigerators, but there's several of them in a row. We brought that to the attention of their director of operations. He promptly got someone in, and, you know, that helped a lot. We are noticing that one of the tiles in a particular area, one or two tiles, has remained damp. So I think one of the things, you know, I sent the restaurant management a notice last week, basically saying that we, you know, giving our best guess of where we thought there might still be an issue. Obviously, we're not going to proceed with getting environmental work cleaned up unless we're sure the water has stopped. It's certainly not a significant amount of water, but something is staying damp, which indicates there's a problem. We've also put the restaurant on notice to go ahead, and a lot of people probably have them under their washers, where you have like, you know, kind of a containment in case there is, something happens with one of the washer ties. Yeah. There is one of, part of the equipment in the bar area does not have that. As best as we can tell, and anybody who's ever dealt with a water issue, water travels, and it travels in directions. So sometimes where you think it's coming from isn't necessarily the case. It definitely seems to be in the bar area. It definitely seems to be if you're, you know, if you're coming in the side door, it's on the left side. Mr. Miller seems pretty confident about that, and he has been checking the area pretty much every morning when he comes in. There is also, in the corner of the bar area, kind of further back towards the maintenance shed in that direction, there is a, as you would expect with a restaurant, there is sort of a pit where a series of pipes go into it. It's likely in that area, we believe, somewhere between the ice maker and that pit where all these different pipes go in. I mean, it's possible it could be something as small as a pinhole leak, and those unfortunately are very difficult to detect. So...
Going back to the insurance coverage, will our insurer facilitate the insurance subrogation?
They will. They will handle that.
We don't have to independently?
We do not. Yeah, so I think they put us on notice pretty quickly when we filed the claim that we did have limits to our own coverage. So what that would mean is, you know, once we put the contractor and provide them a notice of, you know, with a copy of the contract, they will then cut a check for $15,000 to the town to facilitate our getting it done. Once it's finished, they will assist us in going back against, through the subrogation process. Obviously, if they are found not to have coverage, or they don't have sufficient coverage, then it becomes a legal matter for the town to pursue through its own council.
Thank you.
The only, in terms of the proposals, question I have, the comments will be that there's pretty wide gap, right?
There are.
Servpro is only... You said they're only mitigation, not?
Not any repairs.
And they're twice, am I reading that right? They're twice as much?
It's hard to get apples to apples, since we don't have the repair part of it. But yes, it appears that based on what Royal Plus had quoted for both, and what Servpro had quoted for mitigation, yeah, Servpro's mitigation quote is just as much as Royal Plus's mold mitigation work and the repair work. It is.
And did you say you had, I thought I heard you say that Servpro had the recommendations, or was that?
It was actually, it was Royal Plus.
It was Royal Plus.
So I would note that Royal Plus is based out of Ocean City, so we do anticipate that they would be using subcontractors, which is likely what they did in Western Maryland as well. Yeah, one of the things that the local government insurance trust sent me was an article where my counterpart in Iacoda, I can't remember which town it was, in Western Maryland, was talking about the work that they did, because they had, you know, feet of mud in many of their buildings. I think also, I would just mention before I forget, as you all consider this, you know, Kayla and I relied very heavily on Mr. Miller's knowledge of buildings. I would also note when Mr. Miller had his own contracting company, he actually did insurance-related work. So he's pretty familiar with how these things go. And he was, you know, basically did, you know, share with me that it is likely that they will find other things, you know, when they start pulling down the ceiling, no matter who does it. So his request was that we get authorization above the quote from Royal Plus, just to give us some latitude. We obviously don't want to disturb, you know, either the restaurant's operations, but particularly the post office operations. So we did ask that the work be done kind of off-hours on a weekend, which obviously increased the cost, but it would basically make sure that the post office staff wasn't inconvenienced more. But once that work starts, if they pull the ductwork down, they need to be able to proceed with cleaning up whatever they find that isn't visible to the eye. So we are asking for some fairly significant change order authority.
So I may have only opened the original. What is your final recommendation, then?
Kayla, jump in if I may speak, because I know she's also spoken to George. His request was that we obtain authorization for up to $30,000. Obviously, we will have a staff member present when this work is being done. Up to $30,000. Our plan, by the way, is to, once we know the water has stopped emanating from the restaurant, is to have the mold remediation work done, and then to have Sussex Environmental come back and do more testing, just to make sure that we're thoroughly convinced that everything has been cleaned up before we start doing repairs and putting things back together. Yeah, so they would do the mold remediation work. Sussex Environmental would come back and do the same testing it did before with its cameras, just to make sure there's nothing left, and then whatever the repair work is done would be done thereafter. That's what Mr. Miller has recommended.
Is there somebody to do, shall I say it, a structural look? I'm concerned with dry rot or rot, especially because this is not the first time this stuff was happening.
Yeah, I think part of that, Royal Plus would be able to do some assessment, but our maintenance supervisor, George Miller, would also be present and be able to basically work with Royal Plus to see, fill what type of damage, if there's any structural damage.
Okay.
Yeah, based on everything, at least the moisture readings, it appears to be just more mold-related at this point, based on what they can see.
Okay, because my concern would be that we're starting to get some type of weakening due to the number of things. Is it worth hiring a separate contractor just to look at that?
I can certainly talk to Mr. Miller about that. We had some discussions about that, particularly on the flooring. I'm wondering, you know, did the water just immediately kind of come through the ceiling? And was it a kind of a catastrophic event, or has it been a slow seep that's been causing damage or weakening?
Yeah.
We don't think that's the case, but obviously, we probably won't know until some of the equipment in the restaurant is pulled away. Basically, so we can see underneath it.
Yeah. Thanks.
Barb, from a budget mechanic's standpoint, obviously, we are being asked to make a contract authorization, but I think we're also being asked to authorize use of our contingency funds in operation. Is that right?
You can either include that as part of your motion, or I think just, look to the mayor here if he has some thoughts on this, or, you know, recognizing that there will need to be a budget amendment to basically later support this contract. There obviously will be $15,000 coming in from the local government insurance trust shortly.
Well, there is $30,000.
There is, and you could go ahead, and we could go ahead and just authorize that and just move that, if you would like to make that part of your motion.
And then we could restore contingency from the budget amendment?
Correct.
I have no more questions.
Do we need the whole $30,000 contingency, or just say $20,000 of it?
Mr. Miller's recommendation was to allocate $30,000 for the entire project. I think that's your call, whatever you're most comfortable with. I just want there to be an understanding that, you know, if they find, you know, mold mitigation that's unanticipated, that we have the authority to go ahead and do that while they're doing that work. We could certainly come back to you, knowing that we're going to do some environmental testing in between the two stages. If you would like us to come back to you for an additional allocation at your next meeting, if this is great, we can certainly handle it that way as well, whatever you're most comfortable with.
I was just looking at, are we draining, is that, maybe I got something confused. Is the $30,000 Mr. Miller's recommending all the contingency? Or does that include the $15,000 we expect to get from LGIT?
I think Mr. Miller was just focused on the $30,000 in funding the budgetary part of it. Yeah, $30,000 total, right, correct.
Okay.
And obviously, he would be overseeing the work, just to make sure that if there are, you know, overruns with the estimate, he would be there to verify that.
Sure.
Any further discussion? So Barb, we should tee this up as a motion to authorize expenditure of up to $30,000 for remediation and repair of water damage at Penn Place?
Correct, and what I think I'm hearing is that part of that motion would include transferring whatever is necessary from contingency to cover the cost. I believe there was interest in that.
Do we have to address that now? There is...
I don't believe you have to, but if that procedurally is more comfortable for folks, that's fine.
The appropriation for Penn Place is $56,000, of which we've spent only 12. So in terms of the technical requirement that we can't spend unappropriated money, we're covered. we're covered. And it might be, rather than trying to anticipate something that may not come about, why don't we just authorize the expenditure? And, and address, and address the financial allocation at the next meeting, by which time we'll know much more. Does that make sense? All right.
Correct.
All right, I'll entertain a formal motion to authorize expenditure of up to $30,000 for remediation and repair of water damage at Penn Place?
I'll make such a motion.
All right, and moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Very well, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to the town manager's report. Barbara?
Included in your agenda packet is the financial report for the month of September. Just a couple highlights to note. In early September, we did receive the annual tax duplication payment from Montgomery County. For those who may not recall what this is, these are payments we received from Montgomery County as partial reimbursement for services that they don't provide, but for which the county receives taxes from Garrett Park Properties. This will be the, this is the second year that we've received a reimbursement for park maintenance. Prior to that, we've only received payments for road maintenance. Give a shout out to County Councilmember Kate Stewart, who has championed this issue for us. So the amount of the FY 2026 payment was $136,051, and that shows up in account point 3.2, which is from Montgomery County. You'll note that our revenues from local income taxes on a year-to-year comparison are quite starkly different. Our year-to-date revenues from local income taxes this year are $69,644 compared to $1,488 in the previous year. Historically, the town has received income tax payments from this, transferred from the state in both August and September, but we did not do, we did not receive payments for those months in FY 2025. So that's what the difference is. We're starting to see kind of a return to more kind of normal distribution patterns after kind of the upheaval that was caused during the pandemic. Our year-to-date investment revenues, which are account 5.1, are $12,950 compared to $34,204 in the prior year. This is nothing to be concerned about. We have a significant portion of our investment portfolios with the Montgomery County Investment Pool. They provide earnings on a quarterly basis, and we have not received our statement for the quarter that ended September 30th from the Montgomery County Investment Pool. We've talked about this before, but the FY 2026 budget assumed a prior year carryover amount of $133,500. The actual carry amount was just under $160,000. So that will be something that will be recognized when we do the first budget amendment. I also just wanted to note that you may have noted in both the capital budget section of the report, as well as the reserve summary, that that pesky little roughly $6 that is showing as remaining from funding under ARPA isn't actually ARPA funding. The state subsequently reclassified, what was ARPA funding, and they classified $5 and some change as a transfer from the state general fund. So what our accountant, Mary Rocke, will be doing is closing out, as soon as we pay the final invoices, we'll be closing out the ARPA funding and basically just taking that $5 and change and putting it in as a general revenue for the town. The only reason that's there is not because we didn't obligate everything in ARPA funds. It's just a reclassification from the state that changed how the town initially recognized that $5 and change and what it, how it's classified today. Hopefully, that makes sense. Just an update on the, the funding for Town Hall, specifically the 2024 Legislative Bond Initiative grant that we received in the amount of $300,000, because this is more just a kind of a procedural matter. As we've talked about before, the town will be reimbursed by the state for that $300,000, but we incur the cost on the front end. So there is a whole procedure from the state. You basically, after you're awarded the funding, you have to file what is known as a capital awards package. That is what goes to the Board of Public Works, which is the final step in that approval. The next step is to submit whatever contract you'll be seeking reimbursement for to the Maryland Department of General Services Capital Grants and Loans Program. So I did do that with the design development phase services contract that we have with Weidemann Architects. I was notified on October 7th that the Department of General Services had approved, you know, my request for contract eligibility commission submission. What that means is that we are now in a position where we can file for reimbursement for costs that we incurred for the Weidemann contract for design development. The approval did cover both the base contract that you all originally approved, as well as the change order. You may recall that there was one change order to that contract to expedite certain work by the firm's civil engineering subconsultant. So probably sometime in the next 30 days, I'll be pulling together the invoices and the proof of payment and submitting that to the state. And so hopefully, we'll see that roughly $165,000 come back to the town fairly, hopefully by the end of the year. I did want to mention that Bartlett Tree Expert has been selected for this fall's round of tree work. That'll consist of tree removals, pruning and stump grinding. The tentative start date is October 27th for that work, and Bartlett has advised that it will take approximately two, two weeks for all work to be completed. I'll be touching base with Bartlett later this week, just to see if the 27th is still a valid start date, and then we'll be letting residents know that they'll be seeing Bartlett's trucks on the street. Bethke Landscaping, as you all know, has been our long-term provider for fall leaf collection. I did want to let you all know that they recently completed a merger with Landscape Workshop, which is a larger regional company in the southeast. There will be no change to the town's contract or payment terms. We've been advised that the Bethke Landscaping team employees will be joining Landscape Workshop. And also that the Bethke Landscaping team, or the former Bethke Landscaping team, because they're now all employees of Landscape Workshop, will still continue to service our account. That switch over, I don't think, has made its way to the trucks or to the uniforms that the best, that the folks are wearing. So I think they still say Bethke, as far as I know.
Had the town fully executed the amendment to our term of service?
I did, no, I did not, because I learned of this after you all had authorized that, and we were in the process of doing the paperwork, and they completed their merger. We did sign a contract service reassignment, just because we had no other way of providing fall leaf services, but we have not signed the new three-year contract. I think I'd like to know a little bit more, as I'm sure you might as well, as far as who is Landscape Workshop and is anything going to change?
Thank you.
Barb, real quick, going back to the tree work, maybe this isn't the right place to bring this up. As part of tree removal, tree removal season, it might be worth noting, I think it's important that a tree shouldn't be removed in close proximity to a resident. And that they, that resident, at least can go to buy that that work, that one happened in the neighborhood, from at least one person, maybe two, that they were surprised to, one day, a giant tree removed from their home. So I don't know, I don't know how that communication generally works.
Yeah, maybe offline, you can tell if you were willing to share who that is. We do, unless it's an emergency situation, and I know our Arboretum Chair, I think he might have left, but we typically will post any trees that are going to be removed anywhere from two weeks to 30 days beforehand. So the trees that are in this round have been posted. They were posted some time ago by a member of our maintenance team. So I'd like to know a little bit more. I mean, there is always the possibility, if there's a tree that is considered to be a hazard, that something might happen more quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Just wanted to share with you all that on October 8th, we issued RFP number 2025-3, which is for construction of Yendel Park. And the bid submission deadline is November 13th. So we anticipate at this time, now barring anything unforeseen, that we would be bringing forward a recommendation at your December meeting. This work is weather dependent, so what will likely happen is, you know, the contractors will have, you know, can take the winter months, basically, just to purchase supplies or things like that, but the work would likely not start until March, just for weather-related reasons. I also wanted to share with you all, Mayor Keller is aware of this, as is Councilmember Shulp, that we have been approached by the Garrett Parks Swimming Pool Association about some modifications to the town's lease with that organization for the swimming pool. That lease was executed in August of 1953. So Mayor and Keller and I discussed this issue, and we have advised the pool association that we believe we should just execute a new lease rather than try to just modify a 1953 lease. The pool association had no objection to that. The discussions between the parties are still kind of in the early stages, but I know that the Swimming Pool Association ideally would like to see if we can have that new lease in effect by January 1st. So we'll be providing more information as those discussions continue.
It's not that inspiring.
No.
Right.
No, I think there's a couple issues in it that I know I've been talking to Donna Caljean about for some time, that could just use some clarification. I think they've also raised some issues that we hadn't thought of that they would like to talk about. Mayor, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, that's about it.
I know that trees, tree responsibilities were part of those issues. Is there any need for consultation with the Arboretum Committee?
Right now, what the pool association has proposed would be that they would be responsible for pruning town trees that are on the property that they lease, and their request would be that the town would pay for any removals, whether those are due to, you know, posing a hazard, disease, you know, insects or things like that. We can certainly, if you would like, share, I can share with you what we received from the pool association as far as the structure on that issue.
Okay. That, yeah, that might be helpful. I don't think the committee would necessarily have any interest in weighing in on the finances of it, but if there were provisions about replanting or planting of trees and tree selection, they, they might have an interest to weigh in.
Sure, happy to share that with you. This might be a new issue for some of you, but we've been working with General Code on a complete recodification of the town code. The goal was to basically do a comprehensive review and update of the code to ensure that everything is up to date with legislation that has been adopted by the town council, and also that is in line with Maryland statutes. We're also trying to make the overall code kind of consistent in organization format, style and content. I, I've got a draft of the new code. Obviously, there was an ordinance that you passed tonight, so we wanted to make sure that the new code would be as up to date as it could be before it's brought before you. The new version of the town code will be placed on either the November or December town council meeting agenda. It does require an ordinance, so it will be a two-meeting endeavor by you all. When the project is completed, what we will have is basically the town code will be housed on the General Code 360 platform. They are one of the major players in, in the kind of the municipal governmental code sector. The other one is MuniCode. Basically, has a kind of a fully searchable online version of the town code. So there'll be some functionality added for restaurant, for residents, that hopefully they will find helpful. When you get the version of it, it will, like I say, be current through the ordinance that you passed this evening. And then you may recall, I'm trying to think when this discussion took place, I think it was before Councilmember Stroud and Councilmember Deutsch were sitting members of the council, but we'd had a discussion some time ago about adjusting certain fines and penalties in the code. So pretty much what you'll see is those will be marked as, you know, redlined for you to see any kind of change in references that have been updated, either in state law or in, in the Montgomery County law, will be flagged, but most of which you'll be seeing is just a reorganization and a kind of bringing everything up to date, because the online version is quite behind.
Barb, when did you say that is likely to be made available to us for review?
It'll be coming forward in either November or December. I'd like, I need to basically send them the ordinance that passed this evening, so they can incorporate that. So if, if you all would like a little bit more time, we can certainly bring it forward at your December meeting, so that you have an opportunity to review the draft.
I think my primary request is that we get more than the usual amount of time, because it's likely to be a pretty lengthy document for all of us and pretty new for some.
Yeah, so I think what we'll probably do is shoot for maybe December introduction. That way, General Code has an opportunity to, I held up on the Parks Advisory Committee just because I wanted to try to group the most recent ordinances together, and they'll send me a new draft. So maybe we just shoot for the December meeting, Mayor, if you're okay with that?
Yeah, this raises an issue. We're meeting later than usual in this month, so there's a shorter interval before the November meeting. And I, I really meant earlier in the meeting to thank my colleagues for delaying this month, because it was to facilitate a potential out-of-town conflict for me with the regular date. That, in fact, did not materialize, but I, I still appreciate the effort. It might have had the incidental benefit of giving Gerald Lee the day off, but that was already arranged in a much larger sense, and you would have gotten it off anyway. So not to make light of it, but I, I appreciate that. It does mean that the interval until our next meeting is shorter. The length and complexity of a entire code revision is such that I, I think we may want to look at it in November, but not formally, formally introduce it until December.
I would say, if, I can't speak to how quickly General Code will turn around the ordinances, because they obviously need time on their end. The draft that I have currently does not include, you know, the recently enacted ordinances. You know, one option, Mayor, and I'll leave it to your, you know, your discretion, is we kind of punt on the November meetings. I don't know that I'll have the full version of the code back from them yet. And that maybe we just, you know, we have an opportunity to look at it at the December meeting, and you all to ask any questions. Just, I guess, looking for some feedback about what will work best for all of you in terms of timing.
Well, and query whether, once we see it, if we have a scope of interest that indicates that it might be useful to have a work session. We, we've talked about that on numerous occasions, and it seems never to come about. It's unlikely to come about in November with Thanksgiving and so on, but I would hold that as a possibility as well. Until we see the length and the breadth of changes, I think we have to keep our options open, though.
I did want to mention, and like I say, this may sound familiar to Gerald Lee and to Phil, one of the things that General Code noted, and we talked about, I think, as part of the discussion of fines and penalties, which obviously Chris and John did not have the opportunity to be a part of, but they also found some inconsistencies in terms of a specific provision about fines and penalties. There was inconsistent language in the charter, as well as inconsistent language in the code, between the code and the charter. So there will be a very limited charter amendment that will need to be enacted. The town attorney gave me that resolution some time ago, but I just didn't want you caught off guard by that. It's a little bit, it's separate from the codification process.
Charter amendment process is considerably more complex.
It is.
And I think it, I think it fairly seldom, and I think it's more time-consuming.
It is more time-consuming.
We need to have that in effect before we adopt a code revision.
Right, we could bring that, bring that forward, but the mayor is correct. It's, we're now kind of back to the regular process, as opposed to what happened during the pandemic, where the, the state allowed some expedited charter amendments because of election-related issues during the pandemic. But it's a resolution, then there, it has to be advertised in a newspaper of general circulation. There's like a 50-day period for public comment, and so it is a much lengthier process. The scope of it will be very limited. Yes, about, about the charter amendment, yes. Yeah, I can send that out, and I can also send you what the town attorney drafted on that specific provision. Then just lastly.
It used to involve publication in a newspaper of general circulation on repeated occasions. Are there any more newspapers of general circulation?
It's pretty much considered the Washington Post these days, yeah, which is ungodly expensive.
Well.
It would not qualify.
Will we also get the portions of the code that were updated that drove the charter amendment?
Yeah, what I'll do initially is send out the, the resolution that would make the necessary change to the charter. I can get that out to you all tomorrow, as well as just outlining the process. I mean, if you're interested, I can send you the version of the code that I have, but it's just incomplete. And I thought you might want to just use your energy on just something that was the way it will appear before you.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know. I'll talk to you later offline if I got a question. It's the easiest thing.
And then lastly, just wanted to say, you know, the maintenance team is pretty much wound down. Any mow and weeding is now kind of transitioning to, to leave, since that was the subject of the evening. When they have time, they're removing small invasive trees and shrubs as requested by our Arborist Phil Normandy. The, they are starting to gear up for the fall tree planting. Mr. Normandy, just last week finalized the list of trees and their locations, and George Miller will be starting to request utility markings from Miss Utility. This, hopefully this isn't bringing us bad luck, but they are starting to ready some of our equipment and buildings for the winter season. Because it'll be winter before we know it. And I think that's it for me, unless anybody has any questions.
One quick question. When will we start our budget process for the mid-year and then the next year's budget? Which month?
I think that depends on you all. I will say that just, you know, there will be a certain things, like if you want to do a budget amendment to talk about, you know, to recognize the additional revenue in the carryover. You know, when we get the check from the state, we can do that. I will say that starting too early, I think, creates certain difficulties, particularly with income taxes, which is one of our larger revenue sources. Because until we get into around February, we really, it's very hard to discern the pattern of income taxes. I think part of the reason why we're so on the mark, pretty close to the mark this year with the carryover amount is because that was done in the latter, the second half of the year. So I think we can begin that whenever you want. I just want to basically say I would not, I would do a budget amendment later in the year just so you have a better idea of what will be coming in from income taxes in particular. It helps with property taxes as well. I think last year we had the, last couple of years, we've had the, the work session to talk about the next year's budget in February is typically when it's been held. Does that answer your question?
I think that's fine, just as long as we're working out a calendar plan that will get us to adoption in a prior, yeah, in April.
Okay.
You know, it's always good to figure out all those steps.
And work back.
Any other questions or discussion of the town manager's report? Very well. Do we have any unfinished business? We don't have any on the agenda. Good. John, that brings us to the discussion of the MCPS boundary study.
Yes.
Do you want to take the lead on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So many folks contributing to this. But just maybe taking a half a step back, in June, we had a discussion within the CA, the Citizens Association, and although there are many important aspects to a lot of folks, a couple that rose to the level of being noteworthy were that, number one, we kind of stick to the original intention of having Garrett Park and the broader community utilize either WJ or the new Woodward High School. We fast forward now to October, and that has seemingly, nothing is ever set in stone, for sure, but that seems to, with the advent of the, of the new options in the boundary study, seems to be the case. So I think that is a, that is positive. The second aspect really, I think, a lot of folks are concentrating on, and I know that we're in the, we're in the stage where we, we want to hear from everybody. We want to understand what, what the most important aspects are. But another important point is the idea of keeping the broader Garrett Park community together. There are currently four options, option A, B, C, and D. The, the only option that really keeps the community together is option B, without getting too granular into the specifics of the options. The other options divide either the, the actual town of Garrett Park or the broader community. So I think between now and November 25th, when the surveys close, or the survey closes, rather, singular survey, there are, you know, there is a time and opportunity for us to really understand and hear from as many folks as we possibly can, and to be able to then, once we understand that and make a determination, to be able to, to weigh in with Montgomery County. So I think positive progress between June and today, continued work to be done. And I know this is a very important topic for so many folks, folks that have children who are affected and folks who are just looking, looking out for what's best in Garrett Park. So I think that's, that's kind of the updates of, of where we are. I did want to just, again, thank Liz and John King for their continued advocacy on behalf of the town, as well as Nikki Fury, who's just really been tireless in all of her detailed quantitative work in communicating with Montgomery County Board of Education. So, and thanks to everyone who, who was able to attend last night. Steve Walker and the, and the Citizens Association, again, did a really great job in having folks vocalize what's important to them. So, thanks.
And John, I don't know what you can see, but some folks are still here, too.
Oh, they're still here from last night?
No, I just.
There are sleeping bags in the back room if you need them.
Oh, good. No, I just see, I just see, I just see you. I just see everybody in the, in the council and Kayla and Barb. I don't see anyone who's still there, but thanks for everyone who came tonight as well.
So are, I sort of took the bit and ran with it earlier. Are we agreed that we should, at a dead minute, put a placeholder request for an opportunity to speak at the BOE? One of us has to be online at 5:59 on Thursday. Well, that's. Yeah, typically they have categories, and there is a government-elected official category. And then you can also sign up as a, as an interested party.
Agreed. Agree with that, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
So who wants to take that on? I will do, hold on just one second. It's the 23rd. All right, I'll take, I'll take responsibility for that. If others want to go on to to seek slots for testimony, that's fine as well. Then we will spend some time obtaining information as community residents' views coalesce. There seemed some obvious areas of agreement in the, in the discussion last night. And one thing that the council will need to decide is if we state certain principles that the town, the corporate municipality wants to see govern, and then we express a preference for an option based on application of those principles, how much farther do we want to go? Particularly on issues that have a lot more, a, a much wider variety of principles that would influence the outcome, and I'm referring to things like school articulation. We're not going to do it tonight, but I think those are the kinds of determinations that need to be made. And then at the next meeting, we can adopt a statement. And at the Board of Education hearing, someone can deliver a summary of it. Does that sound like the appropriate procedural framework?
I think that cadence, I think that cadence works well. I think the timing works well. Survey due November 25th, meeting the 23rd. I think if we, if we're sticking to our normal November meeting, I think that that, the timing works on that as well.
Would, would the idea of the by the November meeting, we produce something, put it out on the community for feedback at the November meeting?
Well, perhaps feed, perhaps feedback before so we could finalize the written submission on, on the, on the 10th.
Yeah, I think that that's.
That would be ideal. I, we could have it project beyond the 10th, but only with difficulty.
I'm sorry, so does the Thursday of, it's of this week or?
That's just to get our foot in the door.
Okay.
The deadline for written comments is November 25.
Okay, so there's no requirement for a written testimony to accompany the testimony signup for this Thursday?
Short answer is I don't know. It's always wise to submit some.
Would it make sense to quickly go over what themes we want the, that you two represent?
Oh, no, you, you don't submit an outline of testimony at the time. You're, you're just getting a slot. That's the only deadline this week.
Okay, so the deadline of Thursday is just to, to request it. And when does the meeting take place? I'm sorry.
The hearing?
Yes, the actual hearing.
I assume it's contemporaneous with the cutoff for comments in November. We can.
Oh, it's not a set date?
Does any?
I think you said the 23rd, right? November 23rd?
John, they're checking.
Okay.
What did you say, Nikki?
Okay. So the last opportunity to offer oral testimony is October 30? Well, that changes the complexion considerably.
Right, so it does sound like we need to decide on themes of our testimony tonight.
Yes, if not the testimony.
Well.
I mean, I'd be comfortable agreeing as a consensus here on themes and allowing, say, a small subcommittee to work out the details offline. We've done that in the past.
And a lot of great work has been done that I think will wind up, I suspect, that might be a part of the testimony and the submission. Can I offer my thoughts based on what I saw last night?
Of course.
We, you know, correct me if I'm wrong or, so I thought last night was fascinating, and I'm so grateful that, that discussion happened. And what I took away from it, right or wrong, was there, there, there does seem to be widespread agreement in the notion of keeping the town intact and the greater community, which is B, but also option A with a minor revision of, including the South of Stratamar, that there was some discussion around, in other words, early on, there was some discussion around, is A a non-starter, it splits the town? But last night, you know, in talk that went through, there seemed to be some belief that that could have been an error in the misinterpretation of orders. And that should that be corrected, you now have two options which keep the town intact. Where, where I was particularly interested last night was there is not widespread sort of alignment, it seems, on which. So what I wonder, I wonder if the council's approach should be to stick to the message of keeping the town and greater community intact by any means necessary, revise option A, or, you know, keep option B, but potentially stop short of advocating one way or the other for a particular high school, where I think there is no, not necessarily broad alignment within the town. Does that reflect generally the takeaways people had from last year?
If I'm right, I would, I would agree with that, with the prioritizing that the overall, we have a strong, we have a side.
Yeah, John and Phil aren't going to be able to hear you if, if not as long.
Steve Walker, instance. Mostly concur with that, that we did take a straw poll, and it was overwhelmingly in favor of option B. And so if I'm taking priority, I want A, when we, I, I do think that they should take, that y'all should take a position of going for B. But also, if you can't have it, the town should stay intact. That's what, that's what we heard from the community, at least.
And so if we're, it sounds like we've, we've fast-forwarded and compressed the timeframe to, to make sure that we meet this October 30 deadline for written testimony. Steve, tell me if this is in any way inconsistent with your views and what you, what you just said. But B accomplishes that. A revision to A would accomplish that as well. But B is, is really the only option that has been presented by the Board of Education that in its current form would meet kind of both of those goals. The first goal being WJ or Woodward, second being keeping the community together. Is that, is that in any way kind of off-base from what you were thinking?
I, I don't think that's off-base, with just the notion that I don't believe these to be set in stone. And I think we can't really just say, we have an option, so we're good. We have to communicate our principles.
Yeah.
And communicate those loudly, and that's keeping the town together, because nothing is set in stone.
That, and that's what I'm getting at, because I think, and I'm sorry, I want to make sure you get a chance, but, you know, I, I do think we should acknowledge it would be hard for someone last night to vote for A, you know, because it doesn't keep the town intact, but, but it's still an option should that minor change, which might have been an error, and someone might, they might recognize and go, yes, that was an error, we fix it, new A. That might speak to why some folks wouldn't have voted for, in other words, shift that line slightly to cover the South, and who knows what those numbers come back as?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks. I haven't been to one of these meetings since before COVID. Sidney Rose was flying around on the South Side of Town. I missed the theater of, of all of this. Talking about the South Side of Town, I felt like when this last batch of A, B, C, and D came, that we'd won the lottery. Talking about the South Side of Town, I felt like when this last batch of A, B, C, and D came, that we'd won the lottery. Even which is the south side of, we have a ninth grader at WJ. We have a seventh grader at Tilden who'd be part of the first cohort. If we were to start, we're not interested in that experiment. Dudley knows better than Dudley don't. Or the hands were two in the bush. So we're really happy that under all four options, we're going to be WJ, and recognize that keeping the South Side of the town center from the north. Is fundamentally irrational to like everyone probably accept, I mean. But I I'm concerned generally that like B makes a lot of sense this grade, and everyone goes to WJ. The problem with A is that everyone suddenly goes to Woodward. And I don't know if there is a consensus in town for moving, and when I say town, I'm using it in a different way. I'm sorry, I heard of Sean.
Steve.
Steve, sorry. In a different way than Steve does. So I think Steve was using town and referred to the town and the estates. I need to count the referred to the town, and the town should be together. I'd like to see the town go to WJ. If the estates are separated, my experience with my seventh grader is that he had all his friends in the estates. He went to middle school, and now all of his friends went to farmlands. People's friends change over time, and I'm very concerned that the enthusiasm for B, which I share, because it's a college, it's everyone's fault. People moved here from WJ, it satisfies that. People want to sit and have the town and the estates together satisfies that. But it does not mean for some of us, and if you polled people, maybe for many of us, that A would be an effective substitute for B. I would certainly see the town kept together, or see D on the estate possibly. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last statement you made? Because I didn't quite follow it. Sid?
I think you and I think it is the best choice because it has the town going to Woodward. C and D have the town together. Going to Walter Johnson, separate, if I recall correctly, separate from the estates. And V has the town and the estates going to Walter Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to do up here? Sid.
Right, two things. One, just to add, let's say, we've been talking talking monthly about the town and Garrett Park Estates, but we haven't been talking about what happened to the rest of Tilden. So like Sid, your friend, your sons and daughters were at Farmland West Manor. They will be at Woodward because they're so close, but they. They have no options. All four options are Woodward. So our kids are going to get pulled away from the friendships they make at Tilden. So it's just another piece of information. That's just another piece of information. Also, I wrote three letters to help you. Can I go this timeline quick? So Barbara has them all. They don't say which school to go to. You could add that or not add that, but it's more principle based. There's one that's just focused on keeping the town, this southern part of the town together, and kind of makes the point that. You're going to be isolated. We only have ten kids per year in the entire town. And so it's one to one to six on the south side. You're going to be splitting a very small number, and they will left all of their new friends. As well as the estates if we're not with the state. So one is just about the town. One is a letter that's more focused on the full community, and so it delineates how there's two divisions. Both within the town on a couple of options, and we may not some Garrett Park Estates on the other, if you choose to use that. And then there's a third one that's focused primarily on the town, but kind of mentioning the larger community. So they can be resources for you, given our big timeline. And I'll go along as Mrs. Nefertiti, in case you want to with any parts of her.
Thank you, Nikki. That's great.
So what is the sense of the council? Do we want to make a decision here and now? As to what the town will incorporate in its testimony? And written submission?
Yes, I mean. It seems to me we're toning it on. A principle based argument that. Expresses a desire that the town. Be kept intact. With the greater community, these states and what you plan. I I'm just hesitant to. I want to I want to I want to, if possible, get away from. From like I would I would almost see value in putting this together that it doesn't nanny my other high school. I just don't think there's, I mean, for every person who's concerned about being. You know, pioneering Woodward as the first or second class, there's people like we heard from last night who were like. That sounds amazing. What a cool opportunity to be a part of a random high school, so. There's the only thing we, I think, have general consensus on is keep the town intact, the town and community intact.
I agree, those should be our top line messages.
Yeah.
Strongly emphasized at the beginning and again at the end. With all due respect to Mr. Rosenzweig, I don't I don't see a clear consensus from residents. Nor a great value in advocating for one school over another, because it is a great victory that we got. To keep, as Liz King said, what the cluster asked for, which was to get one or the other. For us, so that's. My view, having listened in last night and. Seen other listserv commentary. At least somewhere in the testimony, I'd like to see a nod to. If it were at all possible to avoid split articulation, that that would be a value we'd appreciate, but. I don't think we can advocate for that as a top line, because it just doesn't seem to be. Technically feasible, and with everything we heard about. The likelihood of elementary school redistricting coming later, even though it's sort of out of order here in terms of logical process. It still would be nice to see a nod because Garrett Park Elementary is such a diverse student body. That was. My favorite thing about Garrett Park Elementary for my kids, and. That didn't come from Garrett Park, Garrett Park Estates, or White Plant Park. That came from Rockville and Parkside. And so it would make me a little bit sad and feeling a little bit not right to to leave that out entirely.
Sure, do it. We just have to keep it for the recording purposes. Thank you.
Sir, my wife is in power for years, which is not down the street. I'll just all leave for that. But when we think about like whether this consensus or not, and what people's views are, is that based in its entirety in yesterday's meeting? Or what other information collection has there been? Because I've never ever had the town reach out to me. Over the years until till yesterday, my wife participates in. The Tilden and maybe now the WJ PTAs, but I was just curious what the information now area processes.
The Citizens Association did host another meeting in June, I think it was, and it was a full room as well. I don't know to what extent that was an overlap in terms of participants. And I have just heard from a few residents separately reaching out.
Yeah, certainly not a scientific.
Right, yeah, not scientific at all.
Resident. Contact would be resident and some emailing through the lister, but.
It's unfortunate with the timing, because we just really. I don't I don't know exactly when it came out from the the school system, the new options, but it's not like we had a lot of time. Right, it's been two weeks between the time that the county. Put out the new set of options, and you know, we have this opportunity now to put together our position. So. The first meeting was centered around the first set of options, which were a little bit different, and certainly not overall as beneficial. If from my view, as this current set of options, so we haven't had a great amount of time to ponder the current options in front of us.
So what I'm hearing is that the. Testimony would be substantially the same as what John delivered. Previously. Augmented by a potential. Additional reference to avoiding. Split articulation. But this time it would be offered. Officially on behalf of. The town. Yep.
Yeah, and I think that the for that, I I would agree with that. I I think the. And I don't I'm not advocating for one or the other, but I think that there does need to be a determination made about how large the concentric circle is drawn. If it is, if it is advocating for the town proper to be together, that is a different. That is a different kind of approach than the broader community. And I heard. You know, I heard a lot last night. Again, it's not an exact science. I wish it could be. I wish it could be forensic, but we're trying to do the best we we can here to take everyone's opinions into account. I think we do need to be clear in how how large we draw the concentric circle. Is it? Is it, you know, keeping the town proper together, meaning just the south of Strathmore? Is it incorporating? The estates to incorporate the broader community? We know as residents that this is truly a community, but the second ask. Is a larger one than the first. There are there are simply more children. That could potentially affect the statistics within Montgomery County. So I think. I I agree philosophically one hundred percent with that approach. I think the the question that we need to determine either tonight or in relatively short order. Is is what is what are we asking? What what is the circle that we're asking for continuity around?
But the difference between that testimony and the information we have now, and I can't forgive me because I don't. I don't remember the exact details of the testimony, but now we're grounded in. The. Which accomplishes what we want. And the the specific high school notwithstanding, and A. Fixing what is most likely an error, right? So we we can be grounded in these two options. Which we weren't, I think. When we testified recently.
I think your principal approach is really important because MCPS will do what MCPS wants to do on some level, and so. I know that there have been very upset parents in other parts of the boundary setting that are fighting for equity. And I don't know, they're allowed to make whatever changes they want. So I think fighting for our community is really key. I think if we do another, like John, if you were to testify again. I would like little slides that show where our town boundaries are, because I would like that to get it done as many hands as possible. I think there's a misunderstanding. And also in terms of the concentric circles, just another piece of information, not everyone has the split articulation. Garrett Park is actually pretty unique. And so our kids, if we go to Walter Johnson, we're I and I have no preference at all on which school. Disciple disclosure, but if we go to Walter Johnson, we're going to be going into a situation where the other kids all matriculate, most of the kids would matriculate together from middle school to high school. Whereas we're going to be separated off from our middle school. And so that's just something to bear in mind when you make your concentric circles. In my opinion, our children would benefit from having Garrett Park Estates as well, because they would travel as a group of thirty five rather than a group of ten. That makes sense?
If I may just say two more things I wanted to mention. I forgot when I addressed Mr. Rosenzweig's question, two things I heard at the first meeting and also in just. Chit chat with neighbors about Walter Johnson versus the new Woodward. A number of residents at the first meeting commented that they thought the new school building, being brand new, might attract. Teachers, better teachers, or attract a lot of teachers from WJ. So there was a lot of conversation about that. There were also some comments about the aging facility at WJ. So I I do think that there. Are a lot of parents who. Are interested in Woodward. So I just wanted to share that comment because I forgot to mention it earlier. I do think another point we could put in a letter that would address Mr. Rosenzweig's comments from last night. And I've heard other parents express concern about this, that. These changes. Are hard hitting, especially for the families who are the transitional families, you know, the the first cohort that will hit Woodward, right? So I think if we could mention that we'd urge MCPS to undertake some exemption. Policies that would allow families that have two simultaneous students at high schools to not have them be split in separate high schools. As an example, there may be other situations that would warrant such kinds of exemptions, but. I think we should make a mention in our testimony that we urge MCPS to undertake some. Policies that would ease the transition for families who are caught up in this transition period.
I've been really appreciate that.
It's either that or else consider COSA. And some of these families make it a little more liberal just. Due to this particular issue.
Bill, I think what I heard you say is that it would be beneficial if W if MCPS would make their their policies about. Splitting up families more liberal for granting exemptions, right? Change of school assignment. Is that what you were saying?
Exactly.
Okay, thanks.
I did get a message in the chat from John King, who. I'll just read this. Please ensure testimony includes that come what may Garrett Park should. Should remain in either Walter Johnson or Woodward.
Yes, and we should thank them for following the cluster's recommendation, as Liz King recommended earlier. I I I think those are the main things. We want to keep it tight, and we want to make sure that our points that are important to us are memorable. So, you know, not wander off into too many other themes.
But but I guess the. It's sort of a question around specifics. Or maybe it's tactics. Mention referencing specific options.
I I think it's a good idea to to reference those options, but also. As Nikki pointed out. Stick to the principles that these are the important principles that the town must stay together. We want our wider community to stay together. We're pleased that option B does both of those. We'd, you know, we would appreciate it if option A did as well.
Right.
Something along those lines.
So long as we identify. These principles in this meeting, I think. The circulation of drafts can take place between now and.
Whenever the deadline to submit is. Or at least a full day before.
Well, yeah, I I would say next Tuesday. And that would be our. One page testimony. We would have, as I understand it, Nikki, is this correct, until November twenty five? To submit a longer. More spun out version? Or do you or do you recommend that we make our entire submission? In advance of the hearing and then simply summarize it?
Just know you need to sign up by the twenty third, but I wonder, too, they do take letters as well. I think there's value in going and being heard. But if you wanted to say this is our position for the oral presentation, this is what we feel comfortable with, and wanted to do a written letter later. You could do that, but I don't know when your actual statements do.
I'm sorry, you don't?
I don't know when the deadline is for, I mean, John would know better. See, I don't sure.
You submit a written testimony, deliver that testimony orally, you also submit a letter. What, as I understand it, what's possible?
Okay, yeah.
We are in close contact with our cluster coordinators who are very well versed in.
We, we are in close contact with our cluster coordinators who are very well versed in the timing and the, the proper time to do all this. And we will ask them immediately and we will tell you the exact, like, as soon as tomorrow, when you have to do everything.
Okay.
That would be great. That would be great. I did see Liz and John come on camera. Were you guys trying to add some commentary there?
Just a goof.
Okay, good to see you though.
Well, and actually. In terms of a written, um, not necessarily the testament, but as sort of letter, um. Would it make sense for that to be sort of jointly signed by multiple communities? So it's not just coming from Garrett Park, it's coming from the Queen of Five Run or, or. And I just toss that out.
That could be nice. It, it might be too difficult to achieve in such a short timeframe. And also each group does have some unique.
Sure.
Um, priorities, I'm sure.
I guess, I guess it's worth pulling the bread on, in addition to all this, what can the communities do to help, to advocate for one another?
I will say, I, I, I do think it may make more of an impact if they submit separate testimonies, but the same themes arise. They amplify each other.
All right, how, how are we going to proceed here? A dead minimum we put in for the opportunity to testify. We do that on the 23rd, we testify on the 30th. We find out what the deadline is for written comments. Uh, I was laboring under the impression it was November 25, but we need to confirm that.
A survey is due on the 25th.
That each individual person can submit throughout the gap.
I think we were, we were working on drafts starting tomorrow.
Um, yeah, who wants to take that on? I think, um, Nikki has given us a lot of material on, that would permit us to expand and bolster. Uh, the point we made the last time around about um, not splitting. The, the town, the corporate town of Garrett Park. And then also the, the larger community. The um, census tract argument, I was unaware of what the census tract boundaries were. I think that's a um, at, at a minimum, an important point. Um. The question is how much we can include in our two or three minute oral presentation as well.
Well, I think if you did the argument down in paper as concisely and powerfully as you can, then extract from that. Two to three minutes of testimony. And I'm, you know, I'm happy to work with John on the first draft. That makes sense or?
I'm sorry?
I'm happy to work with John.
Oh, that makes perfect sense to me.
Great.
You've just been volunteered, John, is that okay?
No, that's great. No, no, I think that's great. I think that um, you know, in, yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, happy to help with reviews.
Yeah.
Okay. Nikki, have you supplied these materials um, in electronic editable form so that we can? Filch various, good, thank you.
Yeah, I can send those out.
Yeah.
That, uh, Steve, the Citizens Association will testify as well, is that right? Or?
We, uh, we wouldn't testify, we would, we would submit.
Submit something.
Okay.
So we can also. Find some alignment to and messaging. Me most.
Um, okay, do we have anything further on the boundary study? Here, out there? Okay.
Well, many thanks to the Citizens Association.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, awareness raising, um, hosting the events, it's, and all the work. Very helpful and really appreciate it.
And uh, making generous allowance for the fact that all of you are far more technologically savvy than I am. I was still incredibly impressed by the amount of information and the clarity of the presentation. Um, very helpful.
I have a point of regretting that you were going to announce us. Or maybe I didn't raise yet.
Uh, anything further? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oh, 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 I was jumping. Okay, so we, we've sort of conflated new business discussion and town updates. Is that okay, John? Right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we do have not one, one. Heaven help us, one additional. Item under new business, which is mayoral appointments. I guess that's in my. Court, um, I circulated a memo nominating, I'm sorry, appointing five individuals who had uh, applied for the newly constituted Parks Advisory Committee. Um. And boy, can we shorten this. Uh, I will entertain a motion just to get this on the table for discussion again. Uh, to approve my appointments to the new Parks Advisory Committee as set out in my memorandum of even date. Do I hear such a motion? All right, second. All right, that gets it on the table for discussion. Is there any discussion? I set out the criteria I looked at, uh, the fact that it was a difficult process because there were 11 applications for five slots. Um, and the fact that in addition to the criteria that the council specified in the new ordinance, uh, I also looked for a certain amount of continuity and other factors. Any discussion? Uh, any discussion from the? Virtual sphere? All right.
I just wanted to say one thing. Um, given that, I'm assuming some of the 11 people who volunteered, but, but not all could be selected. Our current serving members, um, it would be nice if we would offer maybe a letter of thank you to our current members who will not be able to join the new committee, given the, the constraints. Just because, you know, I do think they put themselves out there, they put a lot of work in.
Okay. Um, they've, they've all received emails from me, but I think a follow up uh, on behalf of the council as a whole? Certainly. Good. And with that, I'll call for a vote on the motion to consent uh, or approve the appointments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got, thank you. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Surely we all want to get out of here. Well, no, it's a, it's a formality, but um, that will conclude our meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Mayor Keller, we have a quick point of clarification. Councilmember Schulp, did you vote about the appointments to the committee? We couldn't hear you.
Abstained.
Thank you for clarifying.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.